Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 15, 2024 meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening.
Tom Turetti.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Temerian, zoning administrator.
And Jenny Bowser, recording secretary.
Great, okay, thank you. First order of business this evening is a review of the minutes of the September 3, 2024 Has everyone had a chance to pluck those out of our new milk box? Take a look at them? I have nothing to comment on. So, anybody else speak up? Or forever hold your peace?
I also hadn't no comments.
All right. All right, then, what's, can we get a, Paul, you all set, or?
Yeah.
Move that we approve the minutes for the September 3, 2024 meeting as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll abstain, I never saw anything.
That's right. All right. Second item on our agenda is old business. Do we have anything we want to bring up under that topic? No? Okay, then, under new business, item number three, we note on the agenda BFJ Planning for a Plan of Conservation and Development Review. Good evening.
Okay, the green light's on?
Good evening. The green light's on.
I'm Frank Fish, again, for BFJ Planning. Suzanne would have been with me tonight. She's just flying in from Greece. She had a week and a half vacation over there, so.
Not a zoning meeting.
Not a zoning meeting, right, not a zoning meeting, yeah. So.
Gotta take this down.
I've got just, just as a little, I can be fairly, fairly brief on all this, but I could even finish by 7:30 if you want. I hear the Yankees game starts, but.
Actually, Frank, I'll help your hands.
But what's coming around is just an agenda. It's just, you know, to go over maybe four items tonight.
Sure.
And.
Good idea.
And then, at the end, maybe set, set when we should come back for another, another meeting with you. But the first item you can see on this as it comes around.
I'll take that, sure.
Is, everybody's got one?
I got one, yep.
Okay, great.
Yep.
The first thing is the status of work, and if you just look at the attached timeline, we are pretty much, we've done what we wanted to do in terms of community engagement strategy, which we went over sort of at the last meeting, and then we documented that, sent Jack copies of that. And then, we've been reviewing the previous plans, and I'll get, I'll get to that in a minute, because we've, we've got something we want to talk about on the old plan, or the current plan, I should say, until you update it. And then, we've been meeting with the department heads and some of the stakeholders, including the First Selectmen and your, your head of finance, police, fire, so we've, DPW, we've got a good, now, we've got some good knowledge for what I would call producing a report. You can see in Phase Two there, we called it just Orange Today. And what we're hoping to do before the workshop is to have some basic data, so that we can present it to the public, you know, socioeconomic population. And I'll go over that. I've got a handout on the, on the November 13th, what we hope to present there. So, and then, after that workshop, we hope to go on with the survey to people before any second workshop, and would have, we would then be developing all the chapters after that. And so, the timetable, I think we're, we're on, pretty much on schedule, where we expected to be and hoped to be. So that was the first item, just let you know, that we've, we've done, I would say, about 10. Eight to 10 stakeholder meetings so far. Got some good, good information on those. So, the, the second thing is just those stakeholder meetings. We, by the way, one of the things we went over with you is, I just did it verbally at the last meeting, to say, you know, we'd like to, at the workshop, sort of try to get people's ideas for visioning for the plan, what's their vision, and just take, and we've, we've got a handout on what's in here. We tried to summarize it in two pages or so. But the basic vision is that, that we're picking up from you, actually, from the last meeting, and from people like the First Selectmen, is that orange seems to be, there doesn't seem to be any overriding concern about the existing plan, and the, the approach of preserving residential development, preserving open space, relying on a tax base, enhancing the tax base that exists on Route One, particularly the industrial area to the south, seemed to be widespread in, so far. And so, we thought that might be part of a vision statement for, for the workshop. But it's based on a lot of the stakeholders' meetings. The one thing that, and I guess all of you know this, but I hadn't appreciated it as much, the First Selectmen must have spent at least a half an hour describing open space acquisitions. So, open space seems to be a, at least a priority for, for him. So he reinforced, I think, the open space provisions that are in, in your current plan. And I think also, the head of finance sort of reinforced that, yes, there are capital budget needs, but they're being fairly carefully, you know, vetted, and in terms of the budget, and keeping a relatively modest budget in terms of taxes, in terms of the mill rate. So, we've not finished the stakeholder meetings yet. We've got a few to go, but I think we're in good shape on that, which we wanted to get underway before the end of this year and complete them.
Second, has there been discussions with any, you call them stakeholders, I assume that's.
Yeah, I hate, you know what, I don't like the name, really.
I just want to know which one.
By what I mean by stakeholders.
Department heads and stuff.
Department heads, department heads. And then, we haven't finished this, commissions, other commissions, other, other groups that are important, for instance, the school district. So, we've got a few to go yet, but we started with the department heads. And, and I wanted to, we've done some of these by Zoom, we've done others in person. I wanted to spend the day here, because I want to make sure that we had enough time with the First Selectmen, and also with finance, and go over things with, with, you know, both.
Has there been discussions, or any kind of discussions, probably covers it, for the east part of the Post Road?
Yes. There's been a discussion in terms of this, oh, well, DOTs, I'm sorry, in terms of DOTs' plans to widen the roadway, and also put sidewalks in, in the roadway when they do that. And then, the discussion was, well, what about what DOT's already done? Would they be able to come back and put sidewalks throughout the road? In, in fact, your plan calls for sidewalks, the, the entire extent of Route One from West Haven to, to Milford. So, yeah, we did have that discussion.
Well, where I was going was that we've had continuing, I don't want to say battles, but issues in having the east end of the Post Road tenanted. We've had.
Ah, okay, yeah.
And keeping the tenants, people have moved in and moved out, when I say people, corporations have moved in and moved out, and it becomes a continuing source of, of, you know, vacancy, so to speak. And I was just curious as to whether or not any of the First Selectmen's or other boards had any discussions about it.
Not so far, actually, on that particular, but we'll look at that, because we'll, we can get economic data, vacancy rates, that kind of thing, and.
We've been approached by, when I say we, I, I mean, this is not really my bailiwick, but I know the, you've been approached for various things over the years, for that, really, I was thinking used cars, for some reason, wasn't there a car dealership that wanted to go into someplace on the, on the east end of, east Post Road?
You're probably thinking of the second Amazon facility that is used just for their fleets, so they don't actually do anything there, but that's the old Sam's Club building. We've had a lot of discussion with AD Boston Post Road, where the old LA Fitness was, you know, that's something that we've had a lot of discussion here, with trying to get people to take up these larger tenant spaces that, you know, no one really uses anymore.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. We've slowly kind of changed the uses that we allow over there, to help, you know, these, these landlords fill these spaces that are just too big for retailers today.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring your attention, it's been a continuing source of difficulty for the town.
Difficulty, yeah. Adopting some of the old buildings and footprints.
More prevalent, prevalent on the east end of the, you would say, I mean, it exists.
Right, the Post. The, the Post Road West has been less, less problematic, I think.
Less problematic, yeah. Well, you couldn't even see it. I came in today, I didn't come, I, I came in from New Haven today, and so I decided to take Route One. And, you know, as you're going through West Haven, a lot of vacancies. And so, I can see where that, the east end.
If you check the DOT traffic data, once you hit Bull Hill Lane, it drops from like 50,000 trips a day to like 25.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I mean, there's like enormous traffic drop off past Racebrook Road.
Coming.
Going toward the east.
Going, really?
Yeah, that's why they, you have tendency problems down there. You just don't have the traffic.
Oh, going east, okay.
We've, by the way, we'll be able to put in the plan, our traffic planner has gotten from the state, all of the, we call it AADT, average annual daily traffic. So we've got all of Route One, we've got all of the state roads, what, what the traffic is, and how it drops.
Yeah.
You know, there are some minor changes, for instance, on the Merritt Park, why even minor on I-95, but there are some changes on Route One, as you mentioned. So, we'll have all those for presentation at the, at the workshop. We've got that data now, so.
And there's an Orange Economic Development Corporation, Anne Marie Sliby would be another stakeholder, especially talking about.
Sure.
Filling vacancies and businesses that come, she works closely with Jimmy.
Yeah. Okay. I'll make sure to meet with her.
Suzanne has her contact, I know I specifically sent that over to Suzanne.
Yeah, we just didn't do that, yeah, yeah. So, so that's, that's the stakeholder meetings, and, and we haven't finished yet, but we're, we're, think we're on, on schedule, so to speak. And then, I did want to talk about the workshop, and what we've, I think, I don't know if you distributed this already, but I've got colored copies, so I might as well get them out to you. The, oh, sorry, I should have, sorry, Jenny, yeah, yeah, there's a couple there, yeah. What, what we'd like to do, we discussed, oh, yeah, wait till everybody's got it, we, yeah.
Oh, I'll hold on to one.
We, we discussed, last time we met, that this first workshop upcoming, and you can see the date now, November 13th here on the cover, we wanted to review everything with you tonight, so that, you know, for you, you've seen everything ahead of time that we're, we intend to present. So, the idea is, we would do a PowerPoint presentation, again, at the community center, and then, hopefully, take a coffee break. We would also have boards up at the coffee break, just boards where we could go over the existing vision, that's, you know, that's in the Orange Plan, and test it. In other words, maybe people could put up dots where they agree with something, maybe green dots, and where they don't, or they would like to see changes, some red dots, that kind of thing. So it gives us an idea of, are they in agreement with the plan, or do they want an emphasis somewhere, somewhere else? It's a little bit of an exercise during the break. And then, after that, to just do a New England Town Hall sort of meeting, just Q and A for people. And if they haven't finished with the boards, they can take their time after that. You know, the Q and A might be a half an hour, 45 minutes, we'd end, and then people have more time to go ahead on those boards. So, that's the, that's the idea in this. So the second page, oh, we probably already turned to it, is just, you know, recognizing yourselves, Planning and Zoning Commission, as the agency here, the commission, that directs the plan, and be responsible for adoption of the plan. And then, town staff, ourselves. You can see here that Mark Frecker has already started, he, he's the gentleman in our office that I mentioned, that will be working on the transportation and mobility. He started in on that. And then, Thomas Madden is our economic, sort of a senior associate of the firm, who you've met, and Thomas will be looking at the economic issues. So, eventually, they'll be at these, these workshops. Mark will come to the next workshop. So then, and we would show the public an agenda, which is Page Three, and I think that's just, you know, we're trying to engage the public in the sense of, some people would be coming for the first time. I heard one of you say this is your third plan. Yeah, so, but, Judy, so, but for some people coming, for some people coming to the workshop, they don't know what, they'll be wondering, what is a plan? You know, so we'll have a slide, and what is the P O C D? What is this project? We'll have a timeline, we'll show them. What are the chapters, the stakeholder engagement? By the way, if you have another word you like better, I still don't like the word stakeholder, but we tend to use it, because it, yeah, it's broad enough, it's broad enough to.
Important in town.
Yeah, somebody important in town, right? All right, Commissioner.
It's going to start with important people.
And then, we're going to present some basic information, then, on demographics, and on, just what you said, on, on the traffic data that we've developed, and then have that sort of boards, coffee break, that kind of thing, and then, sort of a, after that, a New England Town Hall session. And then, the next one is just, what is a plan of conservation and development? And this is just three dot points, I mean, I didn't want to spend too, I, I don't like to have slides with too many words, but if someone wants to get into the detail, I'm fairly familiar with the state enabling legislation from the General Assembly on what has to go in to the, you know, to the plan of conservation and development. And then, we've got a second slide here, on state law requiring the plan to be updated every 10 years, in case people are wondering, why now? Well, why now is 2015, and you're right on schedule, it's 2025, so, so we'll go through that. There are some things that are now tightened up in the state legislation, just a little bit, and that is, you do need to do, focus in the housing chapter on sort of affordable housing. State doesn't tell you how to deal with that, or how you want to deal with it, that's entirely up to you, but we need to just cover it, and so.
Jack, did I hear that they had revised, through some digging around, that we got higher percentages than we did before?
We did, yeah, so.
Through the magic of numbers?
Right, yeah, I'll go into it a little bit now, instead of the report, is, on the initiative of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Attorney's Office, we said, let's re-tally our numbers, because through them and being in town for so long, they're like, we have more than, than what we think now. After re-talling them, getting all of the affordable reports, we well exceeded what we, we're not at 10%, but we exceeded what we needed to apply for a four-year affordable housing moratorium, and that was approved. So, we now no longer have to entertain any 830G applications for the next four years. Yep.
We can, if we want to, but we're not required.
Obligated.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sort of a moratorium for four years. It's very difficult for most of the towns we work in, obviously, there's some exceptions to cities. We did Bridgeport's plan, but of course, they meet it, they meet the 10%. But most suburban towns that we're working in do not meet that. It's very, very hard to meet that, so. But you're making, you know, you're making progress, gradual progress, so.
The last few developments that we approved, and ones done earlier on, I'll send everybody a breakdown from the state that the First Selectmen provided me, but just so you all can look at it.
Yeah.
The point system is very confusing, so it's easy to read it on there and see that.
On the percentage basis. Is this, where are we?
I think we're at about 6%.
Really?
But they go by the points.
Oh, boy.
So the way that our units are structured, we exceeded the amount of points we needed to qualify for the moratorium, and actually, over that, so we have points now rolled over towards the next four years. So we're in very, very good shape.
Good.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll send that breakdown along.
Thanks.
Yep.
And then, after that, we go over the, the timeline. So, we've, we've sort of done an abbreviated, you know, sort of a graphic timeline here, so we have to spend the amount of time on, on all the chapters and the detail. But we'll go over the whole timeline with the public, the two public workshops, public hearing at the end. And as you know, we'd like to do that public hearing, just, that's the sort of greener dot there, before school gets out, if we can, if we can make that schedule, so that we do it next, in June. And then, we'll show everybody the proposed P O C D plan chapters, which pick up really on the Orange Plan that you have, and we cover all of the things we feel that the state, the state is not specific on all of these, but they are specific on housing, on, on transportation, you know, those types of things. So we think we've covered all of them in the chapters that we, we show. And then, the next one is just, here's the update.
Stakeholder.
On the stakeholders. The town departments and boards, we've, the ones we've listed here are the ones we've met with so far, other groups we've listed, and by the way, I, I just jotted down, we do want to meet with the Orange Economic Development, so we will do that, we'll make sure we do that. So we've got a few, a few to go on that. We've got some takeaways from these meetings so far. I don't think there're, I don't think there are anything that would really surprise you, but on infrastructure, resources, open space conservation came out as, as a high priority, and keeping your resources, environmental resources protected. But also, what limits development is basic infrastructure, which is very little sewer, you're relying on Derby or West Haven plants. So, without that.
So, and this may not be the time to, to quibble over language, but, I mean, you know, the way that, the, the availability of sewer infrastructure directs where high-density development can occur.
Right.
But the way this is written, it seems like there's a, there's a plan not to have a sewer system in here to not develop. You know, it just seems a little negatively worded. I mean, but it is clear that.
Lack of sewer infrastructure limits development?
Yes.
That you find that.
I don't, I don't, I don't read it that way.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it says, you know, if you, if you want greater development, then you need to have improved infrastructure.
You need to have, yeah.
So.
And we have.
Is that even an opportunity?
Yes.
Where, where are you, where are you?
We have expanded the sewer district over.
Sewer district, but we're not going to build a sewage treatment.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
But we have approved projects that were not sewer, like Target, and then they became sewer, and there's, they amend this 1986 agreement with West Haven.
Right.
And then to take the.
Right, but anything that occurs in this town, short of building a sewage treatment plant, is only specifically going to happen on the one end of 34 and the Post Road.
That's correct.
There is no other opportunity for a density development.
Right, in the center of the town, right, exactly.
I didn't see this as, I didn't see this necessarily as being negative, it's just, it's stating a fact.
I think when we write this up, too, we'd like to, oh, sorry.
So, is it a lack of, you know, the infrastructure's where it can be?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the, the existing sewer's infrastructure limits development to, it limits a high-density development to Route One.
Locations.
So, do you want to, well, how else would you word this?
You can word it this way, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just giving you an opinion, but no one else has it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's fine, too.
So, when they want Sewers Treatment Center, you put a red dot on that.
Yeah, I'm going to put it in your name.
I think he's just, you know, identifying it as an issue.
Okay.
Potentially. I mean, it may not be an issue at all. It may be that we're perfectly happy with what we have.
Yeah, and I think when we describe.
But if you wanted Yankee Stadium on, you know.
You just put ice in the urns.
You know, so you're not going to get it.
They did that at the Yellbowl.
Yellbowl, yeah. I think, too, this will relate to our write-up on the regional plans. The state plan, for instance, really is an infrastructure plan, and the state used to call it, I'm not saying we should call it this, but the state used to call it a sewer avoidance plan. In other words, in other words, the state itself.
That would be negative.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, but the state, and it was a man named Horace Brown, I don't know if you saw the APA, he died recently, got a big write-up in our local chapter here in Connecticut, the American Planning Association. Horace did the first big state plan, and, and I heard him speak on it once, and he really said, this is not a land use plan, and of course, all the planners said, what do you mean, it's not a land use plan? And he said, it's an infrastructure plan. And he said, the basis of this plan is being wise with people's taxpayer dollars. He said, sewer plants are very expensive, to put sewer somewhere is expensive proposition. And he said, you need density to support it. And he said, so, we need to support sewers in our cities, or in areas that are going to have density. If you plan for density, yes, then you can put a sewer line in. But he said, if you don't have it, he said, I still remember this.
Or don't desire it.
He said, right, he said, do not, do not do lots of half-acre or acre zoning. It was interesting. He said, unless you have excellent soils, because one day, you're going to rue that decision. And he said, because if septics don't work, eventually, you'll get pressure to put sewer in. He said, so the best densities for that, ironically, he said, were acre and a half. That's what you have. You have a lot of acre and a half zoning, 60,000 square feet, I mean, you know, and so.
Liked our discussions 15 years ago, was it?
Oh, okay.
When we changed a lot of the lots from the minimum acre, acre and a half.
Yeah.
And all heck broke loose, we were.
Yeah. Horace felt that, 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 he was, how do I describe, to me, he was a Connecticut Yankee. I mean that as a compliment to him, that he was interested in planning, also being fiscally aware and sound, and that was the basis, his basis for the state plan. And so, actually, I think you comply with the state plan. And so, I, I think there's going to be a match. At the end, we have to send this out, you know, to the Regional Planning Agency, and, and I'm hoping that, you know, it will be consistent with what they, with their, you know, regional plan, but also the state plan, OPM's, OPM's plan. But anyway, I didn't mean to digress on sewer. But in a way, this sewer has a long history here in the state.
Absolutely.
But at any rate, but on transportation, we're, we're getting also for you, we've got it now, most of it, not all of it yet, but high crash, where's the crash, where are the accidents, we used to call them, in a, transportation industry, we like to call them crashes now, so it's no one's fault, you know, type of thing, but it's crashes. So, but, those usually tie into where there are, where there is the most traffic. Traffic and crashes tend to go together, not necessarily, you might have a bad design to a road. What we're trying to do now is look at where those crashes are, and we'll show them, we'll be able to map all of them out. And then, sidewalks, by the way, your existing plan has the sidewalks called for along Route One. They also have sidewalks mentioned coming up to here. I noticed you have sidewalks up here, right in, in the historic district.
It's a patchwork quilt.
Yeah, but then you have a big gap. Now, the current plan, I noticed the current plan, I was surprised, because sidewalks are, bringing a sidewalk up from Route One to here, that's a long distance. But it's, maybe, it, it must have been discussed 10 years ago, so, and at any rate, transportation's getting at, you know, all, all types of transportation, obviously, the main one, cars, but also, you know, bikes and pedestrian, pedestrian issues. And then, housing, as I mentioned earlier, you know, preserving the existing single-family neighborhoods seemed to come out pretty strongly, and then, also, economic development, supporting, supporting your existing commercial and industrial areas. By the way, I did tell Mark, Transportation Planner, I said, make sure now you are aware, DOT has. D O T has completely dropped the idea of a train station, I said, so, we're, we're not going to get in, you know, it's all going to be, it's all been rezoned. Yeah, well-
No town.
My understanding is, they built it in West Haven, so, yeah, so.
Didn't stop us from spending a whole year, maybe two, on getting ready for-
Enacting it and then repealing it.
Then repealing it, yeah, yeah.
It only took one day to repeal it.
How many losses? A couple losses, one more.
Yeah. Town services we'll cover, and by the way, school system, as we understand, is quite a source of pride and good system. And, and then, again, though, there's been an increase here, and we'll see that in the demographics when we get to it. You've got, it's not a surprise, I mean, throughout, a lot of towns are working in, and it's an American, it's the baby boom, which I'm, I'm a part of anyway. And, you know, people are getting older. That's, that was the biggest single cohort, population cohort in contemporary history, nineteen forty-six to nineteen sixty-four, the baby boom. And, it's retiring. And so, that does, you know, there's a lot of people out there, which will be probably looking for smaller units, maybe, or what they're going to do with their house. And I think what's been delaying that a lot is interest rates. But, eventually, those, there'll be some turnover in the housing stock. And then, we've got population, you got a population increase, slight increase, two point three percent. So, it's, we think probably, based on that, we don't know yet, we've got, I'd like to get the school districts, I told Jack this, like to get the school districts enrollment projections. But, probably, you'll stay with a modest, very modest increase, but, we're not sure of that. So, we're going to just say, right now, you've had a modest population increase from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. And we'll be able to show some charts of where you really had some, you know, like, a lot of Connecticut towns in the nineteen fifty's, you know, post-World War Two, you had a lot of growth. And the number of Spanish-speaking people has increased. In, in raw numbers, it's fairly small, but as a percentage, it's doubled, so, and then, yeah. I didn't catch that right away, okay, right. Your median age, a little bit higher than New Haven County's median age, so you can see the comparison there. And about twenty-five percent of the population is fifty-five years or older, so, yeah. So, then, so we'll go over that, and then, there's income, next page is income and employment. You've got a, you know, increase in your median, your household income. And you, you do have a large, the largest portion of your workers employed in education, health, social service industry. So, indicates to me that there may not be too many very, very significant private sector employers. For instance, you don't have an electric boat, you know, we, we're just working in New London Groton for the Navy. You know, the, the impact of that submarine base, the new, the new submarines they're building, the impact is twenty billion dollars into the economy there. And so, you've got, you know, you've got a, you've got a, you've got a private, you know, driver and electric boat. I don't think you have that here, I think you're more in, as you can see, the largest number of workers.
They probably have a sewer station.
U I is a quasi-public, or Ab- Ab- Abregale, whatever they call it.
Abingrid, yeah.
That's quasi-public, right? I don't know if that's a private employer or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go through, we'll get the, we'll get, we've got the details on this, this was just to summarize things, but we'll put them in the, in the plan. And then, transportation, we're just starting, the one thing I wanted to mention to the public is, sometimes the public doesn't, not everyone, just the layperson, doesn't always realize that, you know, they complain about an intersection, and they might come in here to the town and complain about the intersection, let's say, of, you know, Route One and any of these red roads here, all state roads. They're all, as you know, so, everything here, basically, in red is, is a state, state road. So, they're, they're controlled by the state, or the, or the, and partly by the feds, of course, I ninety-five is entirely federal control. So, most of your major roads are that way. So, when you go to improvements, we heard a lot about the need for improvements on several north-south roads at Route Thirty-four. All of those would need, basically need conduct, you know, coordination with conduct, so. So, anyway, we would show that, and then, the next one, might have to get these numbers bigger, because without my glasses, I can't read them. The, this, these are the A A D T numbers from the state. And, you know, as expected, you can see there, I ninety-five at the bottom right is, is, you know, it's about a hundred and twenty roughly, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand cars or vehicles a day. So, it's, it's pretty huge compared to anything else, except the merit, and the merit's running, you can see here, it's in the sixty-four thousand area. So, the merits, you know, a little more than half, maybe half of what I ninety-five is. And then, all your other roads, you know, when you get a road that's, you know, actually, though, Orange Center Road, as you can see, is down close, closer here, it's, it could be, its size, ten thousand cars a day, Racebrook, twelve thousand. So, those are, those are significant numbers, but they're nowhere near, you know, they're, they're manageable, the numbers for the, for the function of those roads, which is, you know, really as sort of arterial, our collector roads.
On that, on this slide, does it cut off, I'm looking at Route One and the intersection of Bull Hill, which would be past Racebrook Road, right?
Yeah, it'd be that green.
It cuts-
There are green lines.
Right. Oh, that's, oh, that's Bull Hill?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, that the extension of Route One, I see, into West Haven, it looks like they cut it off a little bit. I was just curious as to whether they took any, you were mentioning, Kev, they-
That's where you'd see it drop.
Drop off, yeah, okay.
Yeah. We can get numbers that are in, yeah, yeah. But, that's, yeah, that's where. So, we'll have some basic numbers like this, just to explain to the public a little bit. So, as they read the transportation chapter, this will all be, all be explained. And then, the next one is just project status, next steps. We'd like to, you know, this meeting will be November thirteenth, and we've given Jack poster, you know, just some announcement sheets for it. But, after the survey, we'd like to, after the meeting, rather, the workshop, we'd like to do a, get up online, maybe just, maybe after the holidays, maybe in January, get a survey up online. We'd like to show you that, obviously, maybe at a December meeting, go over a survey with you. And then, then, in winter, spring, after the, after Christmas and New Year's, we develop, you know, the draft plan chapters. And then, lean to a second workshop, which we could go over tentative recommendations. And that second workshop would be more of a roundtable discussion. You know, we would have members of our team come, you know, our traffic engineer'd sit at the traffic table, and our economic development guy would sit at an economic table, a housing person would sit at housing, that kind of thing. And we're hoping that, that you as a commission might sit at, you know, break yourselves up into roundtables in that second workshop.
I'm sorry, at slide fifteen, you start talking about the P O C D goals. Where prior to that, did we discuss what the goals were?
Oh, now, I want to, give me one minute, and I got, give me just one minute, I want to finish here. So, we want to hear from you, last slide. So, what we would like to do, we didn't finish this yet. We'd like to have a slide that goes through, so I've got another handout for you. This is just, this time I'll hand it out correctly. This one is just, we tried to get this down into just a few pages, hopefully, two pages. We, I think, succeeded in only three pages, but, and this is a work in progress. I just wanted to, well, you've led me right into this, this was our next agenda item. Yeah, perfect. So, thank you for this. What I've tried, we've tried to do, and I want to credit Suzanne for going through your existing plan, and trying to call out where the goals were in your plan. And so, you can see, natural resources, open space, community character, sustainability. I think the current plan does have, you know, many of these older plans didn't have much mention of environmental sustainability. I think your plan does have some, and I think we could enhance that. And then, community structure, your current plan calls it, housing and residential development. If you turn to page two, you can see that I crossed off something, and here, I, I just crossed it off and decided, I'm just going to leave it there, so you can see it. And that is, under development strategies, in that, you don't, no longer going to have, you know, transit stop, you know, on the Haven line. You're not going to have one. I thought we might take out encourage transit-oriented development, you're not going to have any. And you've taken, you've removed that zone from the code, so it might take this out. I just wanted to raise that, I don't see putting that in now, it's already, decision already made, so. And then, on transportation, on traffic calming, we thought we ought to show maybe people a little bit, what, what do they mean? But, I always, it's planners' jargon, traffic calming, you know, but what it means is, you know, there's, there's various ways to do that. It could be signage, it could be sort of striping in the road, and it could be even on a certain road, what we could, there's a big difference between a speed bump, which the fire department does not like, because, you know, somebody could go flying off, and your car doesn't, and a, and a, and a speed hump, which is very, which is gradual, and it's just got a sign, and sometimes it has arrows to warn you it's there. By the way, I'm not, not necessarily urging you to do that, but, but on some roads, residents may want it, if they see these things are available. But, each of them, also, you've got to be aware, they cost some money and resources. The signs don't cost much, striping doesn't. But, if you get into redoing a road in some way, and you got to put curbing in, you got to think of snow plowing, and you got to think of things like that. But, I thought, we need to explain this, if we're going to put it in, it's in your current plan, so.
If we are putting these out to get input, are they potential goals? What if the feedback is, no, this isn't something I'm interested in?
I think if the feedback's negative, take it out, it's your call.
But, are you, are you making, you know, when you, when you say goal, are you making, like, these are what we think the goals are?
I think he's testing what we previously identified.
What you previously, perfect.
Right.
What we previously identified is-
Right, just testing the previous plan, saying, hey, here's what's in the previous plan.
Okay, so, these were extracted from the previous.
Extracted from the previous plan. In fact, your previous plan has a couple of sketches on what they mean by traffic calming. And I was thinking, anything with transit-oriented development will take up.
What is a managed-perceived open space, a golf course? Or a farm? You know, it's a, continue, I'm sorry, it's the second, under open space. Continue, open space preservation efforts, and strive to convert managed-perceived open space into dedicated open space owned by the town.
Probably private property.
Yeah, that would be private property.
That would be private property, right. Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, why don't we, you know, hate, yeah, we'll call it private, open space, we'll call it private, yeah.
Golf courses and farms.
Yeah. So, and then, the last one, I just took out on page three, support the establishment of a rail station in orange, because it's, it seems dead, so. So, we thought what we would do is say to people, okay, here's what your current plan says, twenty-fifteen plan. And then, at the last page here in the, in the slide deck, we would put up some boards. And the boards would, you know, be an open space board, it'd be a community character board, and just have people put red dots, or we'll start with green, green dots, things they really agree with. And if they really want to emphasize something, to put two green dots on it, you know. But, if they're opposed to something, or they don't think it's a good idea, put a red dot on it, it gives you an idea. And by the way, this is not scientific, as you know, because this is self-selected, in other words, who comes? Who's going to, who's going to do the exercise? So, this is just to give you, just to feel. And then, after that, and they can get a cup of coffee, hopefully, I need to talk to you about that, Jack. Hopefully, they'll be able to get a cup of coffee while around these boards. And then, afterward, get back together, and then, make any comments that they want in a, in a sort of town hall-style meeting. If they didn't get a chance to finish, they can, after the town hall meeting at, you know, this will probably be eight-thirty-ish, is, they'll have time afterward to, to just finish the boards, and then, we collect the boards after that. And we give you a, a report back, we'll do a workshop report, so you get the, now, this is not scientific, but it's a way to get people engaged a little bit on, do they like the goals that are in your current plan? I would imagine, from what I've heard so far, you know, I imagine that most people are going to like most of the goals. But, there might be, I might be, there might be a surprise. I've always learned something in these, in these sessions, so we'd get back to you with that. And then, I hope what we could do, and this leads me to the next steps, is to meet with you, and I forgot to do this, Jack, I don't know when your meet, your meetings are in December, if we, I was thinking-
One in December.
Okay, one meeting in December.
So, it'll be, it'll be that first Tuesday of December.
First Tuesday of December, okay. Because what, what would be good then is for us to debrief with you-
Yeah.
-on, on the workshop. And what I like to do then is have a draft survey of questions for you, because you will have been at the workshop. And if you feel, hey, we didn't cover something, or, hey, you know, a lot of people cared about this, let's ask a question on it. Because we'll do a survey, which would be probably a Survey Monkey, because this type of workshop is not scientific at all. But, then, if we can, in January, February, put a survey online, it needs to be fairly, we can get into this in December, it needs to be something that can be done, you know, in, within ten minutes, or people aren't going to do it. You know, we've learned, learned with these surveys.
And that'll be on December third.
December third, okay. And we'd go through the survey with you, you need to see it before we put any survey online. We'll send, we'll send, we'll discuss it with you, then we'll send a final version to Jack, and then, maybe, hopefully, put it up maybe in January. And we'd like to announce the survey at this meeting, and say, hey, there's going to be a survey online, so, for the whole town, in January. And, and then, we'll be able to, the thing about the survey is, we'd like to do is, it would not be open-ended questions, there'll be things that can be tabulated, and so that you'll have a tabulation of how people responded by percentage. And if we can get, we aim, we don't always get this, it depends on publicity, and I'll be honest, sometimes it depends on whether there's some controversy that people really care about. They'll fill out the survey, and we try to get five percent, if we can get five percent, that's considered pretty good. I know it sounds low, but a five percent response is considered fairly good on, on a survey instrument. And if we get more, that's, that's great. Sometimes we get, I'll never forget this, we got, we did a plan in a city, Schenectady, New York. The first workshop, this is a city, twenty-five people showed up, that was all. And, and they felt, no, we like our city, we like the existing plan, we're just hoping that General Motors, not was, not General Motors, G E, that G E doesn't move out, that was a hope that wasn't, didn't materialize too well. But, they were, they were satisfied, and so, the, you know, turnout wasn't terrific, and the survey responses were fairly low. But, it, you know, so it's hard to know exactly. We just experienced this in another way in Newtown. The planner there, Rob Sibley, thought, this was about only three weeks ago, this was our second workshop, which was roundtable discussions and everything. And Rob said, no, no, you got to have more people, Frank, we expect a hundred and fifty people. And I counted forty. And when I heard- And when I heard people, they're very happy with Newtown, they like it, and their issue is how to best get real economic use in what they just got, their Fairfield Hills Center, which was an old state property. Beautiful buildings, hugely expensive, to convert to offices and residential. But they got the historic designation they needed, and historic designation is very important to developers for federal tax credits. And so they're gonna, they're gonna be able to get, there's two developers interested, so, but it's very focused on what's not controversial. Buildings are already there, so do you want the building to sit there, or would you like to see some, you know, development? And so, they all thought, there'd be a lot of people arguing over it, and there really weren't, there was agreement to, to go forth with it, so. So also, a small turn, it depends, you know, big turnout can indicate opposition, and sometimes a smaller turnout can just indicate, eh, people are fairly happy. We'll see.
All right.
So.
Well, that sounds great, it's very helpful, gets us up to speed.
Yeah, okay.
And any, any question?
I didn't quite make it for the Yankees game, but you can see, you'll, you'll make the fourth inning, it's a long game.
Any, any other questions for, for Frank at this point, or?
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a good plan, okay, thank, thank you, Frank.
Yeah, thank you all, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, Jack, anything on your, or you already gave your report, sort of, right?
Um, just very briefly, I know I touched on the moratorium, doing a lot of signage cleanup, we did start to get those in-law notices out. I know we discussed it a couple of weeks ago, that we wanna be much better about getting our renewals done.
Yeah.
So Jenny and I did the first wave of those this week, we've already gotten a couple of responses. We'll, we'll, we'll hope that there are a lot more to follow. Firelight Plaza, I'm told, is fully leased, both commercially and residentially.
Really?
Absolutely.
Good news.
You wouldn't tell by driving by, 'cause a lot of people aren't there yet.
Yeah, well, then, just haven't gotten it.
That's fully rental, yeah. Yep, not that many threes, but there are, there are a few three bedrooms, yep.
But the commercials.
Commercial, I'm told, is also leased up, there's a.
Yeah, what was the commercial, I mean, they were small.
One of them is a boutique cosmetics, the other is.
Take care.
Thank you, Frank. I know one, I think they said is gonna be a fitness center, and then there's one or two restaurants that, that are gonna go in there, but I haven't gotten names or anything.
Beautiful.
Very good.
Absolutely. And then the only other thing is our car wash, I know we kinda had some discussion about that. Car wash was actually sold, so that will be a Russell Speeders moving forward, same proposed renovations there.
The one with the vacuums versus, when we were a hundred percent correct.
Property owner stayed the same, the business did not, so Russell Speeders is now gonna be the tenant there. But other than that, I don't have any other.
They have a couple of locations, right, they have locations in.
There's one right over the line in Derby, on thirty-four.
Right, and then there's one in Milford, I think, on the post.
There's one in Milford, too, yeah.
Roses Mill or something, okay.
Okay, all right, well, that concludes our non-public hearing agenda. We have one public hearing, let's get that started, but Paul, would you read the legal notice for us?
Hi, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM, at the Orange Town Hall, six seventeen Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. A petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by the initiative, on the initiative of the Orange Plan and Zoning Commission, to amend section three eighty-three, twelve, B, four, and three eighty-three dash three of the Orange zoning regulations. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file at the Orange Zoning Department, dated in Orange, Connecticut, this third day of October, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Well, you know, my, we reviewed this before.
Correct.
My understanding, what, what drives the amendment to our regulations is the adoption of section fourteen point five, four of the Connecticut general statutes, which, when initially enacted, required that any person who wanted to get a license for dealing in or repairing motor vehicles had to first get a, a permit, a certificate of approval from the, the.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals. And the amendment to the statute made it such that the zoning enforcement officer.
Correct.
Or the Planning and Zoning Commission would approve such a use. And what we've done here in the, in the proposed amendment is to take that responsibility away from the Zoning Board of Appeals, because it no longer needs to be.
It's sort of an outlier in the ZBA responsibilities, as it was.
Yeah.
So they said, we're gonna streamline this process for these automotive applicants, and leave it up to either the TPCC or the zoning official for the town, basically to confirm, is it allowed in this zone, or is it not allowed in this zone?
Right, and you can't, and you can't, you can't have the ZBA based on the statute, you can't have, you can't empower the ZBA to do it anymore.
Exactly.
So that's the, that's the, the one change in the, you know, the deletion of that section four, it's on the third page.
It's clearly a naked power graph by.
Yeah. I'm not too afraid of that, because we keep close tabs on Jack.
Right, and this is not, it doesn't give the enforcement official discretion to decide yes or no, it is just, is this allowed, or is this not allowed?
I mean, if it weren't.
Permitted uses.
If it weren't Jack, I'd never go along with.
Thank you for your vote of confidence, everybody.
So that's what it is, so the zoning, we've given, you know, with this amendment to our regulations, given the zoning enforcement officer the responsibility and authority to approve applications for a certificate of approval, and issue certificates of approval when he determines that all requirements of section fourteen fifty-four of the statutes have been met. The other thing, in the statute, it says, let's see, let me look at the current one. It's, you know, it gives the authority to the zoning enforcement officer, but then it says, in addition there to such certificates shall be approved by the local building official and local fire marshal, so there's other people keeping an eye on Jack as well. So that, I think that was new language.
I believe that, that's correct, yeah.
In the statute, but obviously, that doesn't need to go in our, in our, our regulations, because it's, it's statutory that you need the approval from the.
And I believe that's for the DMV, too, so the paperwork that the DMV gives these people to, to return to them, require those other departments to sign off as well. So that's between them and the applicant.
Which makes sense, I mean, if it's a motor vehicle repair facility, you want to make sure the fire marshal doesn't see any problems with it.
Anything where cars are gonna be inside, you wanna make sure, you know.
So that's what it is, so there's obviously no one in the, this is on our, our own initiative. And there's, nobody here who could provide evidence otherwise, or in favor, you know, so.
I haven't received any correspondence from the public.
All right, any, any questions or further comments on the?
Do we refer it out?
Refer it out.
To the regional planning board?
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, yeah, all the regional planners and people we are required to notice have been noticed, they've been given their thirty days to review and respond to us.
Nothing.
There has been no inter-municipal impacts.
All right, so.
How could there be?
So then, I, I guess we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I know that we need much further discussion on the matter, so, someone's prepared to make a motion to approve these changes to our regulations, and I guess we need a.
An effective date.
Although it says here.
Upon publication.
Upon publication, so we may have already taken care of that.
Okay, yeah, and that'll, that'll work, 'cause we'll put a legal notice in the paper this week.
So, Ben.
Move that we approve the ordinance adopted pursuant to Connecticut general statutes, section fourteen dash fifty-four, repealing section three eighty-three dash twelve B four, and amending section three eighty-three dash three of the town code.
All right, we have a motion to approve the proposed amendment to our regulations, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, all right, I guess that concludes our, our agenda. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much.